Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. The public hearing for Resolution Number 143-36 LS is now called to order. So today's Wednesday, August 18th. The time is about 12:03 PM. Notices for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Wednesday, August 11th, again on Monday, August 16th. And the notice was published in the Guam Daily Post on August 11th and August 16th, 2021. These are all in conformance with the open government law. We only have one agenda item today, and that is Resolution Number 143-36 LS. It's introduced by myself, Theresa M. Terlaji, and Jose Pito Terlaji, relative to expressing the support of Imane Trenthaisai's Nalheheta Turan Guahan and advocating for the passage of H.R. 3730, which seeks to amend Title 38 United States Code to establish in the Department of Veterans Affairs an Advisory Committee on United States Outlying Areas and Freely Associated States and for other purposes. I'd like to acknowledge, first of all, my colleagues who are in attendance, beginning with the cosponsors. Senator Pito Terlaji, who is also the Oversight Chair for Veterans Affairs here in the Guam Legislature. My committee co-chair, Senator Sabina Perez, and Senator Telotaiti Kui. Senators? This is a hybrid hearing, so we have people in person, and we also have some virtual via Zoom. I'd like to acknowledge... Well, before... I'm just going to do a very brief introduction of the bill as is customary, or the resolution as is customary, and before we accept testimony. So our resolution here in the legislature is to support officially H.R. 3730, which is introduced in the U.S. House of Representatives on June 4th, 2021, by the Honorable Delegate Gregorio Kilili Komacho Sablan of the CNMI. The bill is cosponsored by 10 more delegates, including Guam's Delegate Michael FQ Sinekles. H.R. 3730 seeks to establish within the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs an Advisory Committee on United States Outlying Areas and Freely Associated States. The Advisory Committee will be composed of 15 voting members appointed to represent covert veterans in eight remote areas of the world, including the CNMI and Guam. We looked at, and there are currently 26 administratively active advisory committees within the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. Some of them include the Advisory Committee on Disability Compensation, Veterans Advisory Committee on Education, on homeless veterans, Veterans Family Caregiver and Survivor Advisory Committee. There's also one on minorities. And we are honored to have a member of that advisory committee in our presence today, and so we will talk a little bit about that later. H.R. 3730 outlines the duties of representative members of the Advisory Committee on United States Outlying Areas and Freely Associated States. These duties would include to advise the Secretary on matters related to covert veterans, including how the Secretary can improve the programs and services of the department to better such, to better serve such veterans; to identify for the Secretary evolving issues of relevance to covert veterans; to propose clarifications, recommendations, and solutions to address issues raised by these covert veterans; to provide a forum for covert veterans, veteran service organizations serving these covert veterans, and the department to discuss issues and proposals for changes to regulations, policies, and procedures of the department; to identify priorities for and provide advice to the Secretary on appropriate strategies for consultation with veteran service organizations serving covert veterans; to encourage the Secretary to work with other departments and agencies of the federal government and Congress to ensure covert veterans are provided the full benefits of their status as covert veterans; to highlight contributions of the covert veterans in the Armed Forces, and to conduct other duties as determined appropriate by the Secretary. For years, Guam's veterans have vocalized their concerns over the level of care they have received through the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. And I've heard the experiences these veterans have had from their medical claims processing, shortage of access to specialized treatment facilities, understaffing at outpatient clinics, and many, many other issues. These problems have left our veterans with exacerbated medical issues, increased financial burdens, and feelings of frustration in many occasions. And I think we all agree that they should not be subjected to this disparate treatment, especially because of the sacrifices that they have given in order to serve the country. So I want to support the Congressman's efforts and all of the cosponsors of this House bill and, together with my colleagues on behalf of the people of Guam, show that the people of Guam are very much interested in this and fully in support. With that being said, I'd like to now open it up for testimony, and I'm going to begin with a former Congressman himself, Robert Underwood.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and distinguished members of the committee and the 36th Guam Legislature. And I'm sort of embarrassed to go first because I'm the only non-veteran here. And so I want to, first of all, pay my honor and respects to all of these gentlemen who are here this afternoon. Of course, I know all of them personally, and they're a very distinguished group. And as always, it's, it's an honor to be able to support this resolution. I want to express my strongest support for this resolution, which simultaneously does three important things. One, it provides support for H.R. 3730, which is legislation in the U.S. House of Representatives to establish an Advisory Council for veterans in the Pacific Territories and the Freely Associated States. Two, it recognizes the growing number of veterans in the Pacific Islands in this part of the world, not only their numbers, but their sacrifice and their need for on-the-ground services. Three, it provides evidence again of the importance of veterans in our lives, our economy, our society, and our government. The best way to provide continuing evidence of the vital role the Pacific Island veterans play is to establish this Advisory Council. This will not just be a sounding board to express the need for services to the federal government, it is a board to broadcast the significance of Pacific Islander veterans. There are very few places like Guam where nearly every single family is touched by a veteran. Even though I didn't serve, I have three brothers, one sister, and one son who did. My wife, Nerissa, has one brother and one son who continue to serve. The significance of this is hard to overstate. Never have so many people served and so many have been ignored in terms of needed services. Veterans do not need more accolades, or praises, or ceremonies, or resolutions. Veterans need what they deserve, and they deserve medical treatment and benefits which meet their needs and which are no less than those provided, same services provided to other veterans. It is in this spirit that this resolution is important. I hope that no one feels that just voting for this will suffice. We must support the legislation, track it in Congress, and when it comes into existence, we should help find the right people to serve in this capacity. The brotherhood and sisterhood of veterans in the Pacific and will be expanded and will be of benefit to generations of veterans who are yet to be born. I want to thank Congressman Kilili Sablan of the Northern Marianas for leading this charge, and who I want to acknowledge the support of Congressman Sinekles in signing on to be a cosponsor. I also want to acknowledge all of the veterans who are here today, and they each have important leadership positions in their own way, and I, not, not to, well, I'll take advantage of the opportunity to acknowledge Bill Kundif and Danny Santos, who are helping me with the Vietnam Project, Beterano Vietnam, and of course, the Chair right here of the Vietnam Veterans of America here in Guam. The, and will continue to provide and support this kind of leadership of our island and indeed of all the islands to need to ensure an equitable treatment. Viva veterano, viva Tauto Isla.
Viva. We will now ask Mr. Bill Kundif, retired Chief Master Sergeant, who is a member of the Advisory Committee on Minority Veterans to the Veterans Affairs.
Well, good afternoon, and thank you for having us here today. This, I feel this is a very important occasion. I want to thank Congressman Kilili for having the foresight for caring and doing something like this, which allows us to gather as a group on this side of the globe to express our, our issues and perhaps resolve those issues at the veterans' level. He gave us, by doing this, this bill, a real seat, a real seat at the table. We do a lot of things at this lower level, but this is the real seat where we can express our, our issues, and it's going to be at the VA Building in Washington, D.C. I want to also thank former Congressman Robert Underwood. Truthfully, he's the one that broached this idea to Congressman Kilili. And he understands, he cares, so he pushed it, and here we are today. And I want to thank you so much for always caring for our veterans. You are a real good friend of our veterans. When asked to do this resolution, he didn't blink an eye, and I really appreciate that. And Senator Pito, thank you for always supporting our vets, too. Appreciate it. I firmly believe that when, when this legislation becomes law, it will mirror the board I'm on in DC. And what we do up there, there's, there's 12 of us from, from around the country that sit and discuss minority veterans' issues. I'm currently the Vice Chairman of the Cemetery Administration of that group, so I'm oversight on that for now. So we get together and we, we design some questions, we design some issues, we get together with the group, and the once that's completed, we give it to our chairman, they review it, and they then they give it to, to the VA Secretary and give it to Congress. Congress reviews our questions, Congress reviews our recommendations, and comes back and say, "It is approved." A lot of these things are quite bureaucratic, I found out. But if you have a really strong issue and pound the table, they will listen to you. And being on the table the first time Guam was ever represented on that award, I think is a good thing. And we will be represented with this board if it's approved. It is also a very educational process, because all the experts from all the different departments come and brief us. So we thoroughly understand what the VA is trying to do for us, and then we can think about issues that are not being done for us. And so I myself presented several issues for, for Guam, and we hope those issues are It gives us also the opportunity to work with other 15 members of this side of the globe to flush out issues that we're being confronted with and come together as a group with one voice to write our proposals and give it to the Secretary. It gives us the opportunity, once a year at least, because we meet in DC once a year, then we go somewhere once a year, it gives us the opportunity to visit a VA hospital. And last time, we visited Florida, to look at their programs, to look at the good things they're doing, take what good things they're doing, and hopefully we can implement it in our states or territories. Once this committee is formed and approved by Congress, the Secretary of the VA has 120, 180 days to set up the council. Once he set up the council, he has 90 days to recommend and request for membership. All the members must submit their resume and three recommendations to the Secretary's Board. After they selected the, the 15 members, the Secretary has 120 days to conduct the first meeting in DC. So it's a, this is one of the best things that ever happened, it's, it's better than sliced bread, I think. It would give us the opportunity to be heard finally in this part of the world. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're very lucky to have you here to share your experience on, on an actual Advisory Committee to the VA, to know the, the potential of an additional committee that Guam can be represented on, Sisus Masi. We could now hear from Colonel Danny Santos.
Good afternoon. My name is Joaquin Santos Jr. I am a Vietnam War veteran, a retired U.S. Marine Corps, and resident of Guam. I am here to unconditionally support Resolution Number 143-36 LS, expressing Imane Trenthaisai's Nalheheta Turan Guahan support for the passage of H.R. 3730. The Veterans Affairs Advisory Committee must be inclusive in addressing the needs of all veterans who honorably serve in the Armed Forces of the United States of America in defense of the national interest. This Advisory Committee must include the Freely Associated States as part of the 15 voting members to represent veterans' issues and needs. Every island in the Pacific who has a US veteran resident addresses their needs and solutions without the benefit of full support of our government. This issue has been identified and discussed for so long, but nothing has been done to resolve it until now. As specified in H.R. 3730, the duties of the Advisory Committee are to address veterans' issues, which include improvement of programs and services, addressing issues and recommending solutions for changes to regulations and policies, to identify priorities that affect veterans, and to ensure all departments and agencies of the federal government provide the full benefit for covert veterans. This Advisory Committee will be the voice of many veterans' issues from Pacific Island veterans to address the full benefit of covert veterans who willingly and honorably serve in all branches of the U.S. Armed Forces. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel Santos. Now hear from Mr. Joseph Augustine, Chairperson of the Guam Veterans Commission.
Madam, Madam Speaker, Senators, good afternoon. I would like to, first of all, before I go any further, I would like to thank you, Dr. Underwood, for being not a veteran, but being here in support of this H.R., and has always been a very supportive individual for our people of Guam and especially our veterans. I would like to thank all the leadership that's present here today for their continuing efforts to find ways to support our veterans and their families. Madam Speaker and Senators, I am Joseph Augustine, Chairman for the Guam Veterans Commission, and also the President for the Guam Chapter 3rd Marine Division Association here in Guam. I am here to testify in support of Resolution 143-36 LS, advocating the passage of H.R. 3730, which seeks to amend Title 38, United States Code to establish in the Department of Veterans Affairs an Advisory Committee on United States Outlying Areas and the Freely Associated States. I applaud the great efforts and leadership of Congressman Gregorio Kilili Komacho Sablan, CNMI delegate, for spearheading such a long overdue initiative to better serve our veterans and their families. As our veterans remain proud and loyal to God and country, many suffer through the absence of a better veteran services that they solely deserve. Like other jurisdictions who protest and fight for what they believe is deserving for their veterans and families, we too can no longer be silent. I am hopeful that the makeup of this Advisory Committee will be members that understand the challenges and will listen to veterans' concerns and advocate for their needs within their respective areas. Madam Speaker and Senators, I thank you very much for the invite for me to be present this, here this afternoon to testify. That's all I have. Sisus Masi.
Sisus Masi. I want to recognize, I recognize the Senators earlier, but I would also like to recognize the presence of Senator Joanne Brown, Sisus Masi Senator, for joining us today. We'll now hear from Mr. Daniel Manjola, First Sergeant, retired U.S. Army, President of the Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 68.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker, Congressman, Senators, guests, and military veterans. I am here and in support of Resolution 143-36, to further support H.R. 3730, having been submitted or will be submitted by the Northern Marianas Congressman, the Honorable Gregorio Kilili Komacho Sablan. The H.R., when approved, will be a landmark accomplishment to better serve U.S. outlying military veterans living in Guam and elsewhere as applicable. To better serve and deliver the administrative and medical veterans' support crucial to the day-to-day lives of our military veterans and their families. The formation and/or addition of the Veterans Affairs Advisory Committee on the U.S. Outlying Areas and Freely Associated States will certainly be a plus to veterans in our region. We have been working hard for a long time as to how we as veterans residing in Guam and elsewhere can be recognized, not only as veterans living in outlying areas, but as first-class veterans, living within the subject regions specified. This is not on the text I wrote, but we have been hearing a lot of comments about being a second-class veteran here in Guam, and they cannot hear us. I think this is a chance of a lifetime that we have to step forward and support the resolution as well and the H.R. I am convinced that when H.R. 3730 is passed, it will be, it will open the gateway to success to all the veterans' benefits enjoyed by others elsewhere. And I have an addition. If successful, I can foresee the committee to function to the extreme, and our voice will be heard, and the question from other veterans and groups is like, "When can we have a veterans' hospital in Guam?" may not be as fruitless or mere questions anymore. We have to support this committee from top to bottom. We need to make sure that we formulate and appoint the right person to represent us, one of the nine, not merely out of the 15 that's required, but that person who will spearhead our needs and will put us on the map. Maybe in the future, Guam can be the hub for medical services in this area, in the Northern Marianas and Guam, maybe the hospital. This is the time to force forward, to get a hospital here and, and maybe even break away from Honolulu as a region. But along comes the hard things that goes with it, the fiduciary duties and responsibility to manage the money that comes into this institution, once we have, needs to be taken care of. We need to show the people that we can handle our money, and I think only then we will be very successful, and they'll, they'll probably more into listening to us. But we need to support the committee representative. And then I'm going to add one more, and that is being experienced with all the veterans' association here in Guam. We need to channel the complaints so that we will not obscure the point that's being brought forward to the representative. In other words, if we could cut down the one-do-one, and you Senators have seen that, they have bothered you for almost everything, even things that you don't think you should be bothered by our, our residents here in Guam, by our veterans. But maybe as veterans, President and Chairman, we can pass that on to our people and say, "Hey, channel the complaints through the proper authorities. All these guys right here that are sitting here are capable, more than capable, in handling problems." And I think in due time, they could, they should be channeled through them, so that we have a, almost a one voice going up to the representative of the committee and not confuse the issue. So that will be an education in our part, I guess, and everybody else. When making selection as to who our Guam representative is going to be to the committee, it will be, and I can, I can only hope and pray, that that person possesses the true traits of a good leader. Some of the traits of a good leader is responsibility, being transparent, and getting the job done the way it's supposed to be done. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, Senators, and have a nice day.
Thank you very much. We're now going to go to our virtual participants, beginning with Honorable Mayor Jesse Alec, President of the Mayor's Council of Guam.
Okay, good morning. Thank you, Speaker. I am Jesse Alec, President of the Mayor's Council of Guam and Mayor of the beautiful village of PT. I submit this testimony in support of Resolution 143-36 LS. Guam has long been the bastion of proud Americans and Chamoros who have been drafted or volunteered to serve in all the different branches of the United States military, and we continue to have many of our young sons and daughters join this noble profession of arms and sacrifice so much so that we can live free. The military is also an honorable profession, and while we always honor and remember our veterans every November 11th, it is sad to say that in many cases, every other day is just a regular day when it comes to the services and benefits given to our veterans by the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. It is especially a proper description of the way our veterans in the United States Outlying Areas and Freely Associated States are treated and responded to. And why should we, in this day and age, see homeless veterans, jobless veterans, helpless veterans, and hopeless veterans? We cannot and must not accept that this is the norm. Every day should be November 11th for them. Every day, honor and attention should be given to them. Every day, we must demand the Every day, we must demand the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs to give our veterans what they need and what they deserve. I am reminded of a memorial day quote, "All gave some and some gave all." But I dare to say that perhaps the quote for Veterans Day should be, "All get some, some get all." More than likely, if you are a veteran living in the contiguous United States, some get all the benefits offered by the Department of Veterans Affairs. But if you are a veteran living in one of the most patriotic parts of the United States like Guam, all too often, all get some of the benefits only. Resolution 143-36 LS makes it loud and clear that we want our veterans to get all. We need a seat at that table that H.R. 3730 proposes to do by establishing in the Department of Veterans Affairs an Advisory Committee on United States Outlying Areas and Freely Associated States, which comprises of 15 voting members, one of them being Guam. We need a voice, and this is our opportunity to have our voice heard. We have to return honor back to our veterans. We want our veterans to have homes, veterans to have jobs, veterans to have good healthcare, veterans to have a bright future. We need to support H.R. 3730 and Resolution 143-36. This is the least we can do to repay our veterans for all their sacrifices so that we live free. As President of the Mayor's Council of Guam, and without any doubt, I can also state that all my colleagues fully support this effort. So thank you, Speaker Trelahi and Senator Trelahi, for introducing this resolution and giving our veterans a voice. Sizusmaasi.
Sizusmaasi, Mayor Alec, very honored that you are with us today and for your support on this resolution. We'll now hear from Mr. P. Tim Ogun, Director of Guam Veterans Affairs Office.
Good afternoon, Speaker Trelahi, Senators, and our Oversight Chair, Senator Peter Trelahi. I'd like to thank you for introducing this resolution. I also want to thank my colleagues and my fellow veterans, Colonel Santos, Chief Kandev, Chairman Sonavasteen, First Sergeant Manjola, and more importantly, former Congressman Robert Underwood for their support and their testimony today. I sit here in support on behalf of the Yawar, Torni, and as Director of the Veterans Affairs of Guam State Office, in support of this Resolution 143-36, which advocates for the passage of H.R. 3730. I have to say more importantly that as a grandson of a veteran that died in World War II, as a son of a veteran, a veteran of 31 years myself, and a father of three veterans currently serving in the United States military, I support this wholeheartedly, and more importantly, it's long overdue. For decades, the veterans of Guam have not shied away from the voluntary vote into combat for the United States President and for this country. We have not complained. We went out there, did our duty, protected our country and our island, and now we get a seat at the table. Hopefully, that this will get us that voice that we long overdue needed at the nation's capitol. We have been bottlenecked, we have been skirted around the halls, and been given seconds at the table. This will give us the opportunity to have the directly, the direct communication, the direct contact with the decision-makers up in Washington, with those that can decide our fate of our veterans now and the future, so that we can get what is fully due. I salute all of you that are here today in support, and I ask and I call on all the veterans on Guam and in Micronesia to fully support this legislation and resolution so we can get what we deserve. If we, we have served, so we definitely deserve the benefits that are long overdue for all the veterans that have served, and the families that have made the sacrifices for those that have gained the ultimate price. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to provide my testimony, and I salute all of you today.
I would like to acknowledge the presence today of Command Sergeant Major Martin Manglona. He is a distinguished service cross recipient from Guam, so we're very honored that you are here. If you'd like to present testimony, please do.
Good morning, Chairwoman, and all Senators that are present this morning. I have to apologize because sometimes my, my health's not that good and I had a stroke, so bear with me, but I'm here as a private citizen and I really give thanks to Representative Kilili. I met him a couple of months ago when I went to Saipan, and the main thing is this resolution has a dual purpose. One is on a regular channel and from the committee, and the main problem here in Guam right now is if they could get the phone system installed here in Guam. Right now, if a veteran has a problem, when they call, it has to go through Hawaii. It's a matter of just technical problem that they could transfer from Hawaii to local, to Guam, and all we need is a, a good tech to do that. The second problem is the pharmacy. When a veteran asks for a medication, they have to go through Hawaii. There's a way that we could do this. One is between the Department of Defense and Department of Veterans Affairs, who have a satellite up in their hospital. It's very, you know, it's a matter of just giving a space up there. And the third system, the third problem in Guam is prosthetic equipment. If a veteran needs a prosthetic equipment, they have to go Hawaii. All we need is a contractor here, like right now, if a veteran needs a lab, we used to send it to Hawaii, now we, we have a contract with DLS here in Guam. So all these problems are really minor, it could be taken care of here in Guam, because right now we just have six doctors in Guam, two of the doctors off island, they use by Zoom. So if anybody that's on that committee, they could take this problem and have it resolved locally, because it's, it's a matter of know, know how to do this. And I really thank you for allowing me to talk this morning.
Sizusmaasi, I apologize for not calling you earlier. I was just told you weren't going to testify, but I'm so glad that you did. Thank you so much. We have written testimony that's been submitted, I just want to acknowledge that, from Mr. Chuck Tanner, who's a retired major, U.S. Army, and again, I want to thank all of you for your testimony, and I'd like to acknowledge my co-sponsor and ask him to say a few words or questions or comments.
Sizusmaasi, Madam Speaker. Before I share my thoughts to each and every one of our panel, I just want to say that I am also a Vietnam veteran, and looking at members of the panel right here, I've know that I've been in contact with Major Manglona, Bill, the Congressman, and also Major First Sergeant, I guess, and probably if, every now and then I kind of just converse with our good Congressman here. And I would just, I just want to say that we have several projects and programs that is going on right now, and I've touched base with, I've been communicating with General Perez, the former Adjutant General of the Guam National Guard, who I served also, and he was the general, and First Sergeant Benevente on a project that we should be starting, and I'm talking about a veterans monument that's going to be erected at Plaza de Espana, and there's several things that we're working on in as far as the commitment of the legislature to give us an area over at Plaza de Espana. And we also have, I've worked with Tim Ogun, the Director of the Veterans Affairs, on expanding the Veterans Cemetery, and I know Bill have already, we've talked about several things that we need to do in as far as some of the things that is very important in, in our mission in making sure that we invigorate the, the process and to support our veterans. And one of the things that I'm really pushing forward is the regional office for Guam, and I would say, and Sergeant Major Manglona knows this, that unless we have the regional office here in Guam, the medical problems that we have, like getting the equipments and requesting for medication, is, the problem's going to continue. So I guess with the numbers of veterans that we have in, from the Philippines, from the territories or the islands around us and Guam, I think we can, actually, the numbers that we have, we can justify the request to have a regional office here in Guam. Also, the, I guess I mentioned the expansion of the Veterans Cemetery, and I've talked to, I'm working with Tim Ogun, and he's also proposing not only within the fence at, at the Veterans Cemetery, but also outside the fence, because we, we figure that maybe in 10 years from now, we won't have enough space to, you know, bury our veterans over there, so we're in the process of working with the, the commanding general here with the Navy to get the property outside the fence. So those are the things that I'm working on, and hopefully, we can, we can continue to, to make sure that the leaders in the Veterans Affairs and the command understand the situation that we face here in Guam. So I'm fully dedicated, dedicated to, to continue working to advance the services for veterans in Guam, and I want to thank all the panel for your testimony today. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Sizusmaasi, Senator Trelahi. I want to, again, thank you all for your leadership. I'm so very honored by the presence of all of you in this room, truly the leaders, those on virtual as well, and your advocacy for veterans, not just today, but as long as I've known any of you, so it's probably gone on much longer than that, so I'm, that I'm convinced that we have true leaders in this room and on our virtual stream and in support of this resolution, and I want to thank you for your continued care and your service to fellow veterans and to our community. And I just want to note, I'm going to allow all the Senators to ask questions or make comments, but I want to note that the membership that is being proposed in the H.R. 3730 is they're going to have 15 members on this committee, and it, the bill promises that there will be at least one member from each of the eight areas that they list, which includes Guam, American Samoa, Puerto Rico, the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands, the Virgin Islands of the United States, the Federated States of Micronesia, the Republic of the Marshall Islands, and the Republic of Palau. With that, I'm going to allow Senator Perez, if you would like to make comments.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I also want to thank you as well for being here today. I am humbled and honored to be in your presence and to see that you are, you are persistent in committing yourselves to service for, for the people, both within the military and now as, as a veteran. And, you know, I think this is such an important bill because it empowers our vets to really seek the solutions that are of longstanding issues. I know healthcare was one of the biggest issues that, you know, really needs to be resolved. I mean, it's really unfair to have to go to Hawaii to get the medical service and the pharmaceuticals that you need. I mean, it's just, I think this, this important, that's why this bill is so important, because it allows access to the decision-makers to address these longstanding issues, and I really want to thank you all, because you've persisted in the community for so long and advocating for this, and, you know, I think it'd be really great to see that resolution, to see that happen. Yeah, I, I think that, you know, one of the issues being a territory, you know, we all, you know, are under U.S. government rule, but yet we don't achieve that, or we don't have that, you know, equal access, and oftentimes we're invisible, and therefore we're left out of, you know, whatever benefits and, and, you know, possible positive means, the means to achieve what we need. So again, I'm really in support of this, and, you know, I really want to thank you all for all the work that you've done. Sizusmaasi.
Sizusmaasi, Senator. Senator Tai Tegui.
Sizusmaasi, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity, and, and I too am very grateful for you all being here and continuing the fight for our veterans who are not with us right now today to advocate for this piece of legislation that we have, this resolution. I'm here too, most especially to ask the Speaker to include me as a co-sponsor of this resolution, as I stand in full support of it and humbly ask for that placement on that. Dr. Underwood and Congressman Underwood, thank you so much for advocacy for this and it coming to fruition. It takes a while, as we all know, you know, when you, they always say it takes an act of Congress, and we know what that means, it takes years, whenever you say that comment. So, but it's here, and it's here today, and we're not going to give up, because if we give up, then nothing's going to happen. So we have to keep fighting for what, what we believe in, what you said, to stop becoming that second-class veteran, you know, and it's, it's so sad to hear that. I'm hoping that because of this resolution that's ready to, you know, be heard and follow like Congressman Underwood mentioned, that we need to follow this and trail this and keep on top of it, you know, don't just expect, you know, them to do their job. We need to do our job too by following through with this piece of, this resolution that it's being seen by Congress, and, and do what we can to advocate the Congress itself, you know, with, with our other, well, what I call allies on this resolution. I just hope that before that time comes, that Guam will actually have a say on who sits on this committee. You know, it's going to be appointed by the Secretary, but I'm just hoping that Guam will have a say on who sits in this by maybe providing some kind of, you know, group getting together, all the veterans getting together, and, and hopefully providing the Secretary with a member that was appointed by Guam, that we, at least for recommendations, I know we can't tell them what to do, but at least we can provide them recommendations on who should sit in that position. And like you said, you know, it's important someone who's going to be there, who's going to fight for all, all veterans on the island, not just, you know, I have a real tendency to move toward Air Force because my dad, Beba Air Force, that's for my dad, by the way, you know, but Beba, all veterans, all veterans, and I thank you so much for your service to our country and, and to provide us the freedom that we that we have today. Adonkulu sidoos masi. And thank you, Madam Speaker, for.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and certainly it's, it's, we are honored to be in your presence today. There's no doubt we are going to be very supportive of Resolution 143. You know, those of us also that are family members of veterans, I mean, my father was in the Navy, retired. He also served in Vietnam in the Riverine Force and had to go through this process, as many of you have, in, in trying to get services and also for service-related disabilities. Ultimately, we finally were able to get his 100% disability before my dad passed away. But the challenges and frustration, I mean, being in the military, you, you have a mission, you want to get it done, you don't have time for bureaucracy or the patience for it, and certainly, he did not. But through much encouragement and persistence, we were finally able to process the paperwork. And I know what that's like because the first documents that were sent were lost, and then you wait months and months, you don't hear anything back, you have to be persistent to follow up. And it was a very long process, also just, just going through, and I accompanied him to a number of his appointments, of course, because you have to, you have to determine, they have to determine ultimately that the ailments and the sicknesses that you have are related to your service. So, I was able to go with him to a number of those appointments, very time-consuming and very frustrating to the point that even my dad just didn't want to keep going, it's too much of a hassle, it's not worth the hassle. But when the time finally came and, and he was able to, to get through that whole process and was finally determined that his illnesses were service-related, and he was determined to be 100% service, you know, disabled, I know it was an important moment for him, as I know it is for many of our veterans that need the support and service. You know, as you mentioned earlier, I mean, for a veteran to have to go to Hawaii for a prosthesis, can you imagine getting on the plane when you already have a limitation, a health limitation? Not everybody desires to travel or go through the inconvenience of traveling. And there's no reason some of those key services can't be provided to our veterans that, that are here on Guam. You know, as mentioned, yes, you know, second-rate, we hear that often, but, you know, we always provide first-rate service, and that's what's often heard of all of our, our young men and women and those of you that have served in the Armed Forces of the United States. You've always had glowing response in terms of your evaluation and your collective performance over the years. And so, certainly, we're very supportive of this resolution, and, and we look forward to having a seat at the table for you, for all of you veterans to be able to raise your concerns. Because I know as a Congressman over the years, you know, we hear the concerns, we hear the frustration, and yet it's like, how do we address this? How do we, as a local government, address it at the national level? And so, certainly, having a seat at the table where your voices can be articulated directly to the Secretary to know what the issues or concerns are that are affecting our veterans out here in the islands, Guam and our neighboring islands and, and the other Commonwealths and territories of the U.S., I think it's important, as you mentioned, having a key seat at the table. So, you certainly have my support. I don't doubt this resolution will pass 100% of all members of the legislature, and we will continue to advocate for you. And thank you for your service, your presence, your testimony, and reminding us what's real. You know, we're in budget deliberations right now, and, you know, we can talk about money and issues and things, but boy, when you see the faces of our people and the key concerns and issues that affect you, that should be, you know, in the forefront of our minds, it's a reminder today about what's important and what matters. So, thank you so much for coming and providing your testimony for us today. Thank you. Thank you, Congressman Also.
Thank you, Senator.
I just, I've been listening and following Senator Joanne Brown in her position and stuff like that, and she seems to be very accountable with, especially in financing and everything else. And I heard the gentleman all the way to the end saying that when we need something, a pill, aspirin, or something like that, Honolulu had to approve it. One thing to think about that, the reason behind that is Honolulu holds the money for every aspirin that's going to be distributed here in Guam. It's all about money. And until we control our own money by having a veterans hospital here in Guam, be accountable for the money that's going to build that hospital and how we disperse the expenses. And also, at the same time, we need to prove to the world that we can take care of our finances the proper way, which I'm not saying all the time. But think, I just want to pass that on to all the senators, that between me and our Chairman for the Veterans Commission, we are looking real hard as advocating and going forward into the possibility of building a veterans hospital here in Guam. And now, I see this committee to be a very important part once we get our voice up there and we consolidate all our ideas to make it plain and simple and show we can get that money that's going to Honolulu region and put it here based in Guam, and then we could be the rim for medical services for all the veterans around this area. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could, so Chuck Tanner in his testimony, he, he is in support of the H.R. 3730, talks about some past attempts to do something like that, increase the voice of people from Guam and these other islands, and of course, is in support of it, but he, he also says, "But why wait? We can take action now." And so, he makes a couple of suggestions that I'm just going to read onto the record. "The Veteran Commission can reach out and include a portion of their current meeting to collaborate with veterans groups that exist in the COFA nations. A Zoom conference can be set up and work can start now. The information from these meetings can be reported to the Association of Pacific Island Legislatures and where local action can occur, then move forward. If federal action is needed, then the voice is stronger. This effort can then grow from an agenda item on the Guam Veteran Commission to a standalone meeting in which you invite veteran administration officials. We can start by getting an idea of how many veterans are out here in the forgotten Pacific. We can capture the personal stories of service to the country. We can start putting faces to the issues. In this way, H.R. 3730 will get teeth. If passed, then the proposed committee is off to a running start. If it dies in committee, then the effort continues and builds." I'm just, I am very much appreciative of all the suggestions that you have made for us, our action, for fellow veterans' action, and of course, for Congress's action. So, I, I appreciate all the suggestions. I'm going to make sure that all this testimony is, of course, is uploaded to our website so that all can see and that it's made available to the commissions and all of the organizations going forward so that you can also use that. If there's anyone else who would like to make a comment?
I, I, Madam Speaker, I just want to comment that, you know, when I look at the panel here, they're all within my age group, so I'm always appreciative to really just come up here and be with them because these, these are my brothers, these are my age groups. So, thank you very much for being here. Sidoos Masi.
Sidoos Masi. I too am very honored. So, there being no additional individuals to present further testimony, Resolution Number 143-36 LS is considered duly heard. Sidoos Masi to everyone. The public hearing is going to adjourn, but I'd like to invite you to please stay for a few minutes. I have a couple of certificates that I'm going to be handing together with my colleagues, and these are a little bit of a surprise. So, if you could join us, I would be very much honored. But we're going to adjourn this public hearing on this Resolution 143-36, and the time is 1:00 PM. Sidoos Masi.